Session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay. We have an approval of minutes for September 19th, 2016, Tom and Chris, and September 26th.
I didn't have a chance to review them. You do, Chris?
I did, but you want to wait?
We can do them next weekend. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, we'll pass over then.
These are Saturday.
All right. Schedule and open and close a special town meeting. Do I have a motion to open a special town meeting on Monday, November 14th, 2016 at 7:00 PM at Burling Memorial School?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we also need to say when we're going to close this warrant. Are we going to close it tonight?
I would, I would suggest if we have the time that we close it at 8:00 o'clock next Monday.
That would be October 17th.
Yeah.
That would be the outside, only because you want Town Council to review it.
Right, I mean, and this is going to be a long warrant, no matter what, so.
Okay, then do I hear a motion to close this meeting on October 17th, 2016 at 8:00?
I move to close the warrant for the November 14th special town meeting at 8:00.
November?
No, no.
I mean, October 17th.
October 17th, yes.
Second.
It always files me up when we meet on a Tuesday, and I can't just add 7 to the numbers.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to discuss the warrant articles tonight that we have?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of these?
I pinned them all together there.
Okay. Chris? So I just have comments on Article 1, which is to see if the town will vote to request the board to select and expend from the Highland Commons cultural funds the additional sum of $90,000 to supplement sums approved under Article 36 of the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of the elevator project for the 1870 Town Hall building, demolition and replacement of the historical commission curatorial building, associated site work, and the cost of an owner's project manager to oversee the project or take any action thereof. So I would like to take out the...
Site work?
No.
No.
The cost of an OPM. I believe what's included in that is the cost of having the architect oversee.
Yep, so I would say, can we say, and the additional architectural cost to oversee the project?
Sure. The other question is, does that $90,000 include the $40,000 needed to reconstruct the curatorial? So I think that we might want to change that to $130,000.
And I would, I'd like to suggest we say a sum not to exceed $130,000.
So this article does not include all of the total costs for the 1870. Would you like to explain what the difference is?
Well, when the grant amount was not the full amount that we had hoped for, but rather 242 instead of 426, that was a less amount, we, the Town Hall Advisory Committee, suggested to the selectmen that rather than go to bid for the full project, which would be more than what we had, we, we expected to have about $800,000, which is what we have, just under that, and discussed with the architect the plan for could we do it in a limited capacity initially. So we proposed a plan to you in the summer that we go out to bid for a limited scope, which would include everything that needs to be accessible inside, which would be the addition, the ramp, everything, and altering the driveway so that you could have access to that addition, and putting in some drainage to accommodate that addition, but to take out the five parking places and the pavement and the retaining wall that would have been needed for those parking places.
Okay.
And the architect has prepared a Plan B for that.
The architect, so we, we told the architect that, we suggested that he come up with a plan that we could actually do with the money that we had. So he made a base plan, which was that, and then he created an alternate, what they call an alternate, for the bidding process, which included all the rest. So the base bid plus the alternate equals the whole project.
Right. What I meant was, the architect has done a base plan for this reduced parking space.
That's right. That's right. We have paid the architect to make that new plan that we could then submit to the bidding process. So we have, the plans are available at Larry's office, if anybody wants to see them.
So by taking out the additional parking spaces, will there be any parking spaces up behind?
We'll have two parking places, two and a half.
Okay.
So not that much more than we have now.
Well, I'm just concerned if someone is able to drive but not able to access the building, they would have to have a driver to drive them up and drop them off unless there was some parking up behind.
No, yeah, there is, yeah. There's two, two and a half, two spaces and a drop-off.
Okay.
Yeah, currently, in this, in this plan, yeah. Good point.
Yeah, and this doesn't, I mean, we do have the plans for...
Finishing.
The additional, and it doesn't mean we can't address that...
Right.
At some time in the future, that we might be able to have the town do some of that work, whatever, we have the plan, so.
Right. We'd really like to do that as soon as possible. I think all of us feel the urgency, especially our safety people, you know, fire chief and police chief have been involved with that, because, you know, getting the safety vehicles up there and just in general safely getting people up there with the expanded plan, the original plan, there was comfortable room to drive up, back out to the side, and then drive out forwards, which was a real issue, so you don't have to back out the driveway. Plus, we need more space because it's a big building.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Can you tell me what the number is that you went back and cut?
Well, what happened was, we had a bid, we had paid to estimate the cost for the whole project, and that estimate was $840,000 in February of 2015.
Okay.
So when we went to town meeting in May, this few months ago, we knew that that estimate was a year and a few months old, but we didn't know how much more it would cost. But rather than pay an estimator to do it again, we thought, well, we'll just tell the people that, you know, it's going to be more, but you don't know what it's going to be. Turns out to be 20% more.
Yeah. And I have to say, I was thinking 10 or 12% would be the tops over, you know...
Yeah, that's what we were thinking.
Over a year and a half, and that would have been the difference that we're talking about.
Yeah, so when we asked for 950, well, we, we estimated the project was 950 when we wrote the grant, and then when we went to the town meeting in May, thinking 840 to 950, that would be reasonable, but the whole project, the low bid was $1,013,000. So that, when we talked about this at the selectmen's meeting last time, we thought it made more sense to just do the base bid for now, although we, as a Town Hall Advisory Committee, would like to do the whole project right now, just so that you know that, because that would be really a good thing. But I think that what's really important is that the building become accessible, and that we do it right away, and if there's any concern about funding, and there's a possibility that won't get funded, then I think we need to just do the base project.
So the additional amount to fund the whole thing would be above and beyond the $130,000 that we've just put in?
Yes. If we did the, the whole, the option two in my report here, which is the, the whole project, the basement with the alternative, the low bid was $1,013,000, and so we'd have a shortfall of $228,000.
So you're, you're talking about another 90-odd thousand beyond the $130,000 that we're talking about?
Right.
Did, the figures that you're doing, did that include the $40,000 for the materials for the curatorial building, or do I have to add $40,000 to that?
You know, that's a very good question.
I'm pretty sure you have to add it, because you wouldn't have gone out to bid on that.
Right.
It's just building materials.
You're right.
Okay.
We, we, the bid, the bid documents included drawings for the basement, for the foundation, not basement, foundation, because that's what we wanted them to do. It also includes drawings for the building, I think they needed to see it, but they, we're not asking them to build it. We're asking ASABET to build it, that was our thinking.
Right.
We've been in touch with them, and they've been back in touch with us, wondering when...
Yep. So what we're really then talking about is, it would be another $130,000 to do the whole thing, thereabouts, so we'd be talking $250,000 or $260,000 to fund the entire thing at this point. I was asking because if it was another, you know, 40 or 50, I was going to suggest...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Do we put a figure not to exceed that, and then decide, you know, give people two options on the floor to, you know, fund the whole thing? But we don't even have that, you know, we don't have that kind of money in the community preservation.
And no one likes going back again.
I know.
Well, I mean, people will know that, you know...
No, I mean, another time after this.
That's what I'm saying, is people will know that, in order to, in order to expand the parking there, whether we do it with this plan or whether we do it with some other plan, um...
Yeah.
That's going, you know, the people will have to come back on that. Otherwise, we'd have to actually, you know, we'd have to vote, you know, sort of monies out of the tax levy to do it.
Oh, yeah.
I, I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, that, that's what you'd, that's what you'd have to do at this point to...
I don't think it would fly after that.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm really not in favor of, at this point, of, of draining the community, you know, sort of preservation, cultural fund. We're taking quite a bit out of it at this point. It'll bring us down, I think, to around $110,000, because I think when, before we added that 40, we thought it was going to be about $150,000 and change that would be left. So if we're taking the 40 out for the curatorial building, I think that gets us down to about $110,000, which is still meaningful, you know, amount of money, and we can, you know, we can sort of decide how we want to encourage people, you know, whether we want to go with more programs, more projects, smaller things to spread it out, it's still, you know, but I, I wouldn't want to spend it down more than that myself.
Nope. I say we put $130,000, not to exceed $130,000.
Yep.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve that? Well, we were looking at the wording of this.
Well, we're going to approve the whole warrant.
Warrant at the end, okay.
Yep.
Next week?
Next week.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just going to confirm that building materials number, I'm pretty sure it's not, but just to be sure, he didn't put it in for some reason, I don't know why he would, but...
Okay.
So I'll get back to you on that for sure, but...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 2 is returning money, and the first four go back to the stabilization fund.
And I presume that each of the departments...
Yes.
Have agreed that this can, okay?
Now, can I ask a question on the first group?
Yep.
The, the dump closing, is that the one over on Gates Pond?
It's from 1983.
Right.
Yes.
Is that capping it? No.
It's raising appropriate. Huh.
What?
Um, I don't know. I take it that the Board of Health...
Signed off on it.
Signed off on it.
And the Council on Aging signed off?
Yep, I can go get...
No, no, that's fine, I just...
No.
I, I did scan...
My understanding is that the dump needs to be capped. Am I, am I right?
I don't believe that it has...
I don't believe it's been done.
Firmamently capped.
No, but $9,000 is...
You're talking about our...
Our transfer station.
Transfer station. No, it has not been...
If they've decided that we don't need it.
Are we on the dump?
Mm-hmm.
They don't.
Can you fill me in at all on that one?
Please.
Do you know anything more about the dump closing?
That's, just it's signed off by the Board of Health.
My news being held, a case DEP determined that further closeout action was needed. To this point, DAP has not required any additional action, although it is possible in the future. If and when the monies needed will be considerably more, and of course, they would.
Yep.
Well, that's what I was afraid of, it was going to be considerably more.
Oh, yeah.
This is something that it could be...
Yeah, if there's, I mean, if some, $9,000, $9,000, I don't...
I don't think, I don't think you could do much with $9,000.
And these are the bus starter ones.
Okay, no, and they, okay? Yeah, no, I was just concerned that...
I guess my question is, can these go back into the fund they came from?
That's for the first four?
No, for the last four.
That's what June...
Yeah.
Suggested that they, you would probably want those to go to, yes.
Yeah, well, I agree on that.
Right, and we're voting in town meeting to do that, so.
Okay.
The first four...
It's really like funding those items, numbers, yeah.
That $2.75 is going to help.
Okay.
Close it out.
And they're, they're comfortable they don't need that $4,100 for the, the bus, huh? That's what they've signed off on, okay?
They didn't communicate any of those against June, yep.
Okay.
Worded such that they can't use it, maybe.
All right.
So Article 3 is to spend $355,000 from the Conservation Fund to purchase a property known as Webjo Company, Inc., which is 80 acres on Lyman Street by the North Borough Town Line. Do you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, only that, the, there were two offered to you, one for the Benson and one for Webjo, and Asher looked at it, it's just the language the state requires if they give us the reimbursement. But Tom, didn't you do something within the past year with the state, convince them that this blanket approval to spend out of that fund didn't require a town vote on every purchase? Get something on there.
We, we did. We, we showed that they had voted the monies into a conservation fund as part of approving the development agreement. But this is one of those situations where, you know, I encounter it at work too, you know, I mean, sometimes, for example, if you're a corporation, you don't have to provide a tax form, you know?
Yeah.
But sometimes it can take you, you know, three hours and several thousand dollars of time...
Right.
To, um...
Yeah.
To, to, to prove that you're right on that, when, you know, the best thing to do is just give them what they want.
Right.
When we were dealing with it before, we were dealing with, you know, sort of fixing something that had already happened, as opposed to documenting something that was in place.
Yeah.
So we were able to convince them that they didn't have to worry about a gap.
Right.
But I think going forward, if they want this vote, it's really a formality, the money is, is spent by the Conservation Commission, so.
Yeah, and that's, so that's what that is, Madam Chairman, is that the state requires an official town vote before they'll provide a reimbursement grant for the acquisition of land. The Benson Farm was the one that's critical, we really would like...
Wait a minute, so you might want to say to the camera what property this is?
Okay, the, the property, there were two of them. One, what you're calling Webjo is a so-called 80 acres on the east face of Lyman Road. It's the old front of Mount Pisgah, including the famous lookout area up there. And the, the other one, the Benson Farm, is that lovely farm up at the end of Highland Street, just as you went to Bolton with all the horses, there's 40 acres there that we want to buy a CR on. We want to buy the, we're buying the Webjo land on Pisgah in fee, and we're buying a CR on Benson Farm.
Say what a conservation restriction is?
Right, and both, and they want a vote of the town on both of those.
Well, the, the conservation restriction would put this in, would put the Gredeau Farm property on Highland Street on the same basis that we now, you know, enjoy with respect to Chedco, so...
Correct.
It, it's an agricultural conservation.
Right.
So you don't necessarily have rights to use it, or, you know, whatever, but...
No.
You preserve it the way that Chedco has been preserved.
Yep.
And the, the one on Lyman Street is an actual buy, so we would own the land, you could use it for trails, whatever.
Right, and that is all contiguous to a lot of existing land and part of a three-town project, which is why we're, we're getting...
It's truly a landscape project. It links 2,000 or 3,000 acres existing on the west side of Lyman Road with, you know, up to about 70 acres on the east side, and it just extends the trails for miles. You could almost, at that point, leave Burling Center and hike for miles up there.
Yep.
And it's a great, great wildlife habitat in there.
Yep. No, and, and you, you've been chasing that for a lot of years.
Up to 25.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody wants it.
Yeah, and it is beautiful land, I mean, it is. There are ledges, I mean, really, you know, dramatic, nice feature.
You could go for a hike up there and take hours to get back.
Well, call the police to help you.
They want an ATV.
No, they, they already called us.
Well, I'll take, I'll take you on a guided hike, you get a group of people, and I'll show you.
I haven't gotten lost, so...
Did you have somebody got lost?
We've had a few times, yeah, we have.
Up on Pisgah?
Usually kids that go out and then stay out in the dark and turn around.
I got lost with some people in town, and we weren't there in the dark.
Took two hours to get out?
All right, then.
So if you could put those on, that'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And do you, would you like to stay, and may I suggest that we could go into the executive session about the resea purchase at this point, because Tim, is, did you have something you wanted to do?
I just said you had something about regional dispatch and one of the letter you received from mine, so.
I'm in no rush.
So I mean, I can, if you want to do executive session, I can wait, so.
No, no.
No, we could, we could do yours first and then go into executive session. Regional dis...
While we had everybody here.
All right, number seven, Devon's Dispatch update and a vote regarding Townsend membership.
I don't know what information you've gotten on Townsend. Just an update, our plan is to be up and running January 4th. We, in the last week, actually, our fiber connection had been run into this building. There's some more updates now that that's in that we're going to start to do, including the access control system and some other things. So things hopefully should start moving pretty quick in the next month or so. Kind of waiting for an update on when those things are actually going to be scheduled. But then Townsend, I guess, has now been proposed to enter the district, and I got to say, for me, that causes some concern, even though we're not even there yet. In the discussions I've had with the executive director at the district, they're kind of at a tipping point, and it's kind of stay where it is or go big, which is okay, but it needs to kind of happen at once. From what I understand about Townsend potentially joining the district, what we thought our assessment would be, would actually jump considerably. And the reason being is the call line that Townsend would immediately ring in. If Townsend were to be coming in with Townsend Shirley in maybe three communities, then that call jump and, and the additional personnel and, and equipment that would be needed will be offset by the number of towns. But just by Townsend alone coming in, we'd probably be looking at, from what I understand, probably about a $40,000 higher assessment than we thought. The other thing about it, and that's not the end of the world...
Do we get a vote in this?
And we get a vote now.
I was going to ask.
The, the other thing with her is, is Townsend's coming in in a rush. They're in a panic. This isn't a well-planned, the study was done to see if, if it should happen and it's going to be a good fit. This is, they're having problems with personnel, and they're looking for a quick fix, and they're looking for the district to be that quick fix. So I think it's something that is, we have a vote in it, we need to be very cautious of it.
Well, I, I also think that we need to, before we vote anyone in, I'd like to see us up and running.
Right. And, and they've taken on a lot in the last year. I mean, Bolton, Bolton started in April, now we're going to be starting. It's, it's big changes for the district.
How do the other member towns feel about this? Do you have a sense of that?
Um, I think it's mixed. I know it's, from what I understand, from Bolton, they would be against it, but there, I think there's also some member towns that think growth is, is a good thing. I don't necessarily see growth as bad, but if it's growth just to grow and to look at power and control and things like that, it's not a good thing. You know, I know one of the options that has been discussed has been some state funding to offset the costs of Townsend. That may be great upfront, but can you guarantee it next year? Can you guarantee it in year three?
Right, right.
And that's ultimately going to get passed on to us, and I think that needs to be looked at strongly.
So how many, how, how many voting units are there?
Saracens, Lindbergh, Lancaster, Harvard, Bolton, Burling, six now.
Six now. And does it take...
I don't know what the...
A majority?
Simple majority.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be interested to know.
Well, the, the meeting is...
Tomorrow at 1:00.
Tomorrow at 1:00, which I can go to, but I need to know what, you, how you want to vote.
Is it, is it a vote tomorrow?
I believe so.
Sounds like it is.
Is that with the letter that you got, yeah?
Yeah, there's Townsend's town administrator requesting membership.
Even when you read the letter from Townsend, it looks like they're, they're desperate.
Dire.
You know, they're really, they're pushing this...
Is that the way to fix a personnel issue?
And, and well, and what led to the personnel issue? Is that now going to create issues for us?
Maybe we need to know a little bit more.
Supposedly, it's that the talk was that they would regionalize, so the dispatchers started bailing when the town hadn't even been given entree to the regional dispatch. So it's not even like what happened here, or after a vote.
From my perspective, that shows a, maybe a lack of communication of the leadership there.
Right.
And what would, what would that mean once they go into the district?
Well, I, I would put a motion on the table to, to vote in either the negative or to vote to defer the consideration of this tomorrow in your, you know, sort of as appropriate to the circumstances and in your judgment duty.
There you go. Well, my judgment at this point would be to say no.
Yeah, no, all I'm saying is, you, you might get out there and the vote might be...
You might have more consideration.
To defer a consideration, or, you know, whatever.
We'd have a $100,000 surplus and...
Or maybe they have some information with a five-year guarantee from the state on funding, or something that, that we can look at that is going to offset it, and then, in the meantime, other communities could join, which would...
But I don't think we're prepared to recommend a positive vote on that on the basis of what we know at this point.
We have, state funding was going to be $300,000 in capital for Townsend to come on, but that's, that's not a good...
Yeah, that's similar, the money we've got...
Yeah, that's Townsend.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to take the vote in the negative, that unless... that unless there's some condition that changes that the town selectmen would vote not to?
To defer?
To have-
I had said to vote, you know, in the negative to the expansion of Townsend or to defer the question, if that was appropriate under the circumstances.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So then the second part was, there was a letter from Maya after a meeting we had on building security. I will get you some firm dates when I know, and Judy may be able to ask me for this tomorrow on the district, but Maya's concerns will be addressed in the transition to the district. It's part of what we're doing in the upgrades.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at their concerns, and it seemed like we were looking at all of those.
Yeah, we're already planning, it may not be done in 30 days, but it's, I mean, it should be done in the very near future.
Okay.
Would Maya have this question about the doors? You know, the locking and the safety, if we weren't going to?
No, they came here for me, so we've got a new coordinator. What's his title?
Senior Risk Manager.
So he came out to meet us and looked at the building while he was here.
And did he know that you were going to put these things into effect at some point because of regionalization, or?
We talked a little bit about some things, but some, it was, he came up as he was leaving. It wasn't like the gist of our whole conversation.
Okay.
One thing we discussed-
He started with that when he came in the door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With a safety committee, which would be something that we could do easily. We already do it with the schools. And we can almost handle it as part of the monthly department heads meeting. Make it like twice a year, we discuss, you know, the safety. And it's just something that they'll look at and I think will help to control some of our insurance costs and say we have a safety committee and assess some of the potential issues.
Okay.
That's awesome, 12.
There we did 12. Yeah, we did.
All right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, have a good night.
Okay.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the possible acquisition of land pursuant to a 61A right of first refusal. Andrew, aye.
Boomen, aye. Kefi.
I will send it in tomorrow morning. People can take a look at it. If they object, we'll have to put it, you know, re- we'll have to revote it, you know, next-
Meeting?
Next meeting. But I had taken what they had. I put in a little more detail about the settlement agreement and added stuff about the fact that we would want to have the ability to review a preliminary draft of the ACO. Okay? And I will get that out to you. Got interrupted with some stuff late this afternoon, and it's sitting on the computer still, so.
All right, next we have scheduling interviews for Inspector Land Use-
Yeah.
Clerk finalists. And I don't have a problem with that.
Scheduling?
I think you put it in as 8:15, 8:30, and 8:45 next week.
Yeah, only because we have prior-
Yeah.
Does anybody have a problem?
No.
Nope.
Okeydoke. Wiring Inspector, does anyone wish to make a motion or discuss?
Well, you know what I usually do on this? I say give everybody a piece of paper with the three names on it, and you put 1, 2, 3 without talking, and then see where we are. And maybe we don't have to.
Well, would you like, you could do that.
Yeah, we got a piece of paper here.
Yep, my turn.
Okay.
I will say that I think all three candidates were good.
Mm-hmm.
I think all three candidates would work for Berlin. Probably lucky that we had some good candidates.
Let's name the three down.
Henry, Dennis, and Peter.
Montero and Wheeler.
What was the?
Peter Casello.
Casello.
Yeah. Henry, Dennis, Peter, okay? Okay. I'm willing to make a motion that we appoint Henry Wheeler as Wiring Inspector, Dennis Montero as Assistant. Reappoint, that's reappointment. And that we send a letter expressing to Peter Casella his interest in the position.
He was an excellent candidate, and I think that, was it? It was kind of tough, actually.
Mm-hmm. But I would say that all three of us had the same order, which is why I'm making that motion as it is.
Yep.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a thanks to the committee, the screening committee.
And thanks, yes, if we can get a letter thanking the committee, that would be great.
Okay. Um, let's see. Oh, here we go. Okay, we have the Department of Labor Relations has asked us in regards to the unionizing of the Highway Department if we want consent election or if we want voluntary recognition. Our lawyer supports consent election, which is when the highway workers will have to vote.
Right. I mean, essentially, the difference is we could accept it, period, without their vote, just accept the union. The other option is that we're accepting, but it's effectively conditional upon a vote of the employees to be represented. And I certainly agree with, I agree with the recommendation of council. I think that, and, you know, I'm somebody who's actually, you know, in favor of unions. I think they do a lot of good things for workers and so on. But I also think that they involve commitments and financial commitments and all that, and that the workers who are represented should have a vote in it. So I strongly favor and would make a motion in favor of the consent election as recommended by council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we already discussed Devon's Dispatch. I'll go tomorrow at 1:00, and I will update you on what has happened. Consideration-
Oh, hang on.
Yep.
Before we leave, that authorize, you know, the sending of the ACO letter, you know, conditional upon, you know, sort of no objection by the other members when they review the final draft.
Mm-hmm.
I'd make a motion in that regard.
Oh, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That way we can get it out of the way, if you guys like the text, and if there's a problem, we can-
Okay.
Tax status for selectmen. I believe that there was nothing received from council?
That's right, so just holding that.
Although, again, as I looked at it, it, this is, what it contemplates, okay, by the bylaw is that we may do it. We're not one, we're not required to do it. Historically, I can tell you we haven't done it, which is why I said, if we're going to do it, I would favor, you know, doing it sort of at the beginning of a fiscal year so that, you know, certainly not doing it, you know, retroactively. The, and that the, that it's not, it doesn't work by us giving the licenses to the tax collector for approval. It works by the tax collector giving us a list, and then we have the option of withholding a license for somebody that's on a list or not. And there are hearing requirements and so on that attend that. So it's not just, it's not just somebody saying, don't give this person a license, or, you know, let me review your licenses and tell you, you know, what license is not to issue. It's our, it's at our discretion. And there are, you know, procedural safeguards and hearings for people, you know, when you're doing that. And I think even, you know, one of the comments came in that, you know, some of the entities only pay, you know, personal property taxes. Maybe we don't, you know, maybe we don't want to go there. I mean, we haven't gone there in the past, whatever. But I think that's, as I had a chance to read it over the last week, that's the way it seemed to me that both the bylaw and the state law contemplate it working.
Okay.
Do you want town council to not bother? Because you were asking for best practices on how a town would implement it if they wanted to, or do you still want him to provide that?
If he's got some input, yeah. Okay?
Okay, his Personnel Committee discussed the library page post, library page post hire. So this was the hiring of a library page that although the library has posted page opportunities in the town offices and on the website, they did not post this one. They took it out of a pool of resumes that he had from a previous posting.
The person's already started now. So he want, he asked if there's any need to disturb what's already happened, or?
I don't think we need to get in a twist about this. The horse is out of the barn, and it, the job and everything was posted. There's nothing nefarious about this, so I would just say he understands how he has to do it now, right?
He does, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, I do.
Okay. FY18 Community Preservation Mitigation Funding Application. Yes, that should be brought back in. I think the board will agree on this, and updated for FY18. Currently, it's out there for FY17.
Yep, absolutely.
Right? Yes, no?
Right, okay.
Treasurer Request About Tolman Property Management. The treasurer wants to recuse himself from handling the Tolman property because he is a direct abutter. Should we ask the Assistant Treasurer to handle this?
He said because she's still under his direction, he thinks that that is not, he also thinks that's inappropriate.
I'm not sure that's the case. Can we put that to town council under the, they should be able to answer that. But my feeling is, if that were the case, any time you had somebody at some level of management in a state or town department, you couldn't have anybody else manage it. So I'm not sure I agree with that, but let's check it with council.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So we talked about the Maya unlockable front doors. That's gonna be changed, and the creation of a safety committee. And then the last thing here is a follow-up regarding the 10-6 Town Officers Meeting. Well, I think at some point, we have to decide how we're gonna implement a capital planning committee. I have all those notes, which I can write up.
I took some notes. If, hang on, let me look at this. Do we have the calendar here?
I thought you did a good job, Judy, at the meeting, running it.
No, thank you.
Indeed. I would be, I would be happy, because I took some notes, too. I'd be happy to submit a draft based on that Townsend model by the 24th. I'm gonna be, Joni's going to London, so I'm gonna be taking some time off, and it wouldn't take but 45 minutes or an hour. And I'm gonna actually have a couple of days.
Okay. Okeydoke.
All right, so that's the 24th.
Are you gonna give him the notes you have, or does it matter? You took the same notes?
Yeah, I think I took pretty much the same notes. I mean, you know, there were some things that we kind of kicked around and didn't fully nail down, and I thought a little bit about afterwards.
Right.
And all I'm doing is putting out a draft.
Right.
People don't like, one of the choices I can make, they can change it.
Okay, sounds good. If anybody wants to look at miscellaneous correspondence, it's up there. Do we have anything else anyone wishes to bring before the board?
I don't think so.
I just, the festivities thing, have we, has there been any further development on that?
Not a word.
Not a word. I only asked that because I happened to be at a church meeting, and people were saying, are we gonna be organizing, you know, some stuff? Because the church usually-
For Christmas in Berlin?
Yeah, usually it has a soup supper, you know, in the evening, and very often we'll have a breakfast, too. And people were saying, and I said, yeah, I think it's going on, but we didn't really have a committee to-
Didn't have a committee.
Didn't have a committee.
To run it. So I just asked about that, because last Sunday, I was at a meeting, and people were asking about it. Okay.
I think that Dave Westling and they are still meeting and planning to do one.
Okay, and who is they? Do we know?
Not really clear. I do think it's Evy, it might be Mary Reddington, George. I think the police and the fire chief are interested in having some public safety exposure added and helping out.
Okay. Let's make a direct appeal to the home audience here. Anybody who would be willing to help with the planning and organization and running of events for Christmas in Berlin, please feel free to contact the Board of Selectmen's office. It's an opportunity to, I think, get involved in a fun thing, to help the town, and it's not a long-term commitment. It's a one-day organizational project, so we'd love to have you join. Thanks.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.